I want to call the October 9, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order. Roll call. Conan?
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wechsler.
He's excused.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Caschella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Mark committee attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
And Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure? Motion to approve, Caschella.
Second, Roth.
Most by Councilman Caschella, second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? Seeing none, workshop discussion items, named motion second to approve the council workshop meeting minutes of this September 11 and 25, 2025.
So moved, Caschella.
Cook.
Motion by Councilman Caschella, second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is review of upcoming planning and zoning commission agenda items. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I'm here to go through our November 6 planning and zoning meeting. And we've got quite a bit of stuff cooking here, so I've got quite a few slides to go through. The first one, this was tabled at our last P&amp;Z meeting, and there's no updates currently. This is what we call the Ifrig Track. This is at Mexico and Canoust Road. They're proposing a mixed use development with villas and some commercial. I've had a few calls with the engineer. They're looking at different options, maybe some senior housing on it, but I haven't heard anything specific right now. So at this point, that may be tabled or withdrawn, or I'm not positive, but that's what I know.
Let me ask you a question. If they go back to senior housing, does that change? Do they have to withdraw this?
Yeah. It's hard to say how they would lay it out, but I would say it almost have to be withdrawn and started over.
Okay.
Here's the map on that. Next project, 1414 Bryan Road. This is Nelson Land Service. It's a chunk of ground. It's zoned agricultural, right on east side of Bryan, probably about a half mile or so south of Mexico. They want to rezone that from ag to residential and commercial, and then subdivide that, and then build a new commercial building and a house. So this is the property. Bryan Road's out here, and this is the subject property. There's two stub streets that tie into the property on the back. Here's the plan. So the stub street here, this is Woods Fort, would come out and create the driveway. There'd be a new house back on the east, yeah, this would be the east side, be a new house back here. They'd subdivide that as a residential lot, and then remainder going out to Bryan, Bryan's over to the left-hand side of the sheet here. And there'd be a new office building proposed out here, and then a new storage building kind of right in the middle, and this all would be a commercial lot for it. It's sure not to change in use. It'd just be some new buildings, but he would keep his landscaping company there, and then, actually, it's his son would have a house out in the back. And was there any questions on that one?
Are they gonna, you said they're gonna use the stub street for Woods Fort. What about the other stub? They're not using that one?
Not using that. We've kind of gone back and forth on that. I don't know. We had some comments about, you know, the plan kind of all along, whoops, was to kind of have this go through, but just be in one house. I'm not sure how strongly we feel about that anymore. But yeah, just be the one stub is what's shown on here.
Amanda?
I'm trying. This is right in my backyard, so I know this area. And this is property right behind that landscaping company?
I mean, pretty much the landscaping. This is the landscaping company.
There's the, and then where would it be an addition behind it there?
So this would be a new building there. This would be a new parking.
So it's replacing the landscaping company?
It's still the landscaping company. Nothing's really, they're not replacing the landscape company.
So that's what I was asking. Where's, where's, where he gonna build the house and then a commercial area?
Oh, the house. Oh, the house is back here, and then this will be all commercial, but the landscaping company would remain, and then there'd be a new office building out here. They have kind of like their office, it's like the old house right there, that would stay, but then they have another, another one, a new one out in front of that, and then Bryan is out here.
And what is it being proposed with the commercial office building, you said?
This is like their office.
Okay.
And then this new building back here would be like indoor storage, the building.
Okay. Because I mean, I have concerns with it, how it backs up right to the neighborhood, because we already get complaints about that landscaping company and noise. And I tell them, I mean, they break noise ordinance, you know, have their trucks running and throwing things in the back of it at 4:00, 5:00 a.m. sometimes, and I tell my neighbors to call in, call the chief and let them know, but that would be one of my concerns. But if it was an office building, they wouldn't.
Yeah, they, we have written it up for like a, they've got a temporary trailer out here. This was one of the reasons they're building this building is to get rid of some of that material that's outside, I do know. But as far as the hours, I don't know, but really, as far as along that property line, really, nothing would change. It would be kind of more in the middle and then out front.
Good. Michael?
Just to be clear, you're saying it's an office building, but it's the office building for that company, correct?
Yeah.
It's not a new office.
That's true. Yeah, right.
All right. I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that. Thank you.
So the other question I have, we'll take coming off of Woods Fort. Is they gonna make a driveway all the way out to Mex, to Bryan Road, or that?
That would be, that's the driveway right there.
That's it? They're not putting concrete all the way down where, you know, that person who's living in that house has got to go out to Woods Fort and not?
Yeah, it's showing to go out to Woods Fort.
But there's nothing connecting to the building and the outdoor or the pole barn?
Well, it's kind of hard to see. A lot of this in here, that's our, this kind of lighter shaded area is already existing asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
They're adding, this square here is proposed new asphalt, and that's the new building.
My only concern is the people that are living there, it's his son, he's gonna be living there. If he wants to get to the new office, he's gotta go out to Woods Fort.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Out to Bryan Road.
Yeah, right.
I didn't, I just don't know if that's what.
I don't know the answer.
He's planning.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, so it would open up? Because right now it's blocked.
Yeah. Woods Fort would open up to that house?
Oh.
Well, let me tell you what. It's either that or it's gonna go all the way through. I don't think you want it going all the way through.
But you're asking, Mayor, if, like, if he wants to go to work, he's got to go out and back around.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
He can walk from his house to that. Okay. Anybody else? Lisa?
Just a quick question. So currently, this is zoned agriculture?
Mm-hmm.
How are they able to operate a business on it?
Back when this was done, it was, it was more of a nursery back, you know, they allotted this back, this back was kind of all probably like landscaping stock and rows and stuff.
It used to be Tim's Tree Farm.
Tree Farm, yes. I think it's just evolved over the years, and pretty much since this new, I guess as a new owner, he's kind of changed it. You know, that's kind of why we've been talking to him about rezoning it, because it is more commercial than it used to be.
Nelson's bought out Tim's Tree Farm. Am I correct, Deb?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was just basically a nursery where they were growing trees all in that back, back part.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Deb.
How many acres is that?
4.66.
Oh, thank you.
You see that? Okay, good. I was trying to see.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
Yeah, okay.
Amanda?
Oh, I was just throwing in, since you're talking about trees, if you talk to him, let him know that his trees are hitting my fence over there, so.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, Amanda, you can tell Mr. Caschella when he comes up, the P&amp;Z, he. All right, anybody else? All right, David.
Okay, here's another one, kind of in the same neck of the woods here. This is 845 Fizey. This is kind of just south of, this is Tora Creek. Bryan's gonna be out here. I always get this.
Burcalo.
So is that Burcalo there? So just east of Burcalo, there's a huge communication tower in the middle of this property, and they want to develop it. It's currently zoned residential, single family. Here's kind of another shot, kind of showing the property in question. There is a fall zone around this tower, and that's kind of in this white, but this hatched red area is outside of that, and that's what they want to develop with residential, single family homes. So we have a plat proposing 20 new homes here, and this is it. So the tower is right in the middle, and there's guy wires that come out of this, and this pretty much is the limits of that fall zone, plus 10 feet, the height of the tower plus 10 feet. They propose coming in off this stub street, Green Meadows Drive, with 19 houses coming around there. And then over here, this is Mirrorfield Manor. It culminates here, dead ends, and then this become, there's a drive that comes off that goes to the tower. They're gonna relocate that and then build a new house there, is what's proposed. So that's, this is a subdivision plat. It's already got the zoning, but 19, this is, I just lost the name, Kelvey Homes is proposing this, so that's all we got on this one.
Questions? Go ahead.
All right, this is a plat that's subdivide this lot. This was recently approved with the site plan in the last couple of months. There's, there was a new building proposed and some parking around, and they want to subdivide that into two lots. So really, no changes from the plan that we approved before, but this kind of taken, building was kind of down in here, and there's Peru Creek, and the Lake Seamus Dam is right here. They want to subdivide off that eastern little acre there and propose that subdivision. Other than that, really not much to say. This was, was this on the last council agenda? It might have been the one before, but we did a resolution to support some senior family housing here, or senior housing, I should say. This is at south side of Mexico, just east of Bryan. And this is Walgreens here. There's Hillman Place here, and then we got a villages of Hillman Farm out front. This is pretty much the same plan we had seen. This is the elevations, and this is gonna be a conditional use that would be coming to council for a senior overlay district, and then they have a site plan for the project. We did get some floor plans, two-bedroom units. This is on the first floor. They have a community room, do some different kind of amenities for the residents here, fitness area, TV room. This is independent living, and that's probably hard to see, too, but this is pretty much what we had, when we had a meeting with them probably a month ago. This is governor's run. The insurance are gonna come in, the building and the parking lot, and this is Walgreens over here.
No entrance or exit off of Mexico?
No direct access, no. This shared with the two neighboring properties. Is there any questions on that one?
Isn't there some kind of construction going on that lot right now?
You know, I think what you're seeing might be just, whoop, a little further back than I thought. There is a sports building going in right there. That's what it was, yeah.
You're taking a nursery all the time with that one.
Next one, we have a site plan. This is for a parking lot addition at Mastercard. So this is, pretty much this line there is the edge of the Mastercard Lake. Do we know what those are? That's the, yeah. So this is back, back in there, and this is their building, so this is kind of tucked way back in there, just a parking lot, so a site plan for that. It's a kind of a blow up of that same area. Okay, so it's 2601 Highway K. This is currently what we know as Dogwood Social. They will be, they're, you know, they're working through building the new site off of Bryan, going through that process, and this would be reused as a new, the site would, no changes to the building, but the building would be reused for Savers is the proposed use. So we have this as a site plan. They're doing a couple of modifications to the site with adding some dock doors and parking and changing some things, so it's just a site plan through planning and zoning for that. And I think I have, the elevation doesn't look too much different than what it looks like today.
He's just using the Dogwood, or is he using the liquor store, too?
Yeah, this, we're kind of where the liquor store is now, is here. This would be like the drop-off that, that says.
So he's using, they're using the whole building?
Whole building.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of where the liquor store is now would be their drop-off. They'd have a canopy there for that.
Questions?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
A Savers is like a donation, like goodwill type?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, folks, the only problem is it's, the way it's zoned, it's allowed.
It's a permitted use and.
It's permitted use, so there's really not a whole lot. Would we like to see that? No, but hey.
Okay.
But there are conditions. There's no outside.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
You know, no storage. We've done the same thing. Goodwill's the same.
I understand. I just want to make sure that we keep an eye on, they just don't come drop stuff off and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our next one, this, we've got a few things down here at Caledonia. So this is a, right at Caledonia Parkway and Highway DD. We've got a plan for a new driveway, like a shared private road here. We've got Dobbs on one corner, then Scooters down here, which I have plans all in here for that. Right in the middle of all this, just last Thursday, we approved a site plan for Bank of Old Monroe. This is the Bank of Old Monroe lot. Here's the private drive. I haven't heard about the trail. We're still working on that. We've got a conditional use permit for the Dobbs Auto Repair, which will come to council. That's on that lot. Here's their building. Looks similar to what the few other ones we have around town. And then there's their plan. They're gonna be sharing, this is a, kind of a write-in from DD, and then they have access here. And the plan, and then kind of the same area, like I was saying, this is the Scooters lot. This one is a little bit different than at least the one I know of downtown here. This, there is a, like a, like a walk-up kiosk. You can walk up to get your coffee, but it does have the drive-through also, also. So we have a conditional use permit for the drive-through and the site plan.
We're gonna make sure they have the ballards and the crosswalks marked.
That was a comment we were working on, yeah. We also have a comment about a light down there, too. Oh, I forgot about this one. This is Arrive Apartments. So this is, this just expired over the summer. So this is up at TR Hughes and Home Field, and I thought, just to kind of tell you, we've, we actually originally approved the zoning on this back in 2018. Site plan was approved. They changed the building elevations. Then we changed our density requirements, probably back in 2020 or so, and then they came in, rezoned it to our four. We approved a site plan. And we approved it again, and it's expired, and, and then come back. So this is up here, just kind of past the ballpark on TR Hughes, right up here, and pretty much that's the same plan, same building. I think they changed some of the floor plan, but as far as the exterior elevation appearance, it hasn't changed, but it's pretty much what we've approved. You know, this will be the fourth time, so.
Who's taking care of that lot now, the city or the builder?
It's definitely not the city. I know we've had it written up. I haven't heard anything about it at all this, this year. It's been good. I know in summers past, it's been a problem, but I do think they had hired like a contractor to keep an eye on things, but it's not the city doing it.
And that's supposed to be cut 20 foot back from the road?
Well, yeah.
Who do we get with to make sure that's always done?
That'd be me. You can tell me.
Go ahead, Forrest. Well, I've.
Or what?
I've gotten phone calls about it starting to look a little raggedy.
Okay, yeah, I can, I'll talk to them.
Starting to look like a tree farm, actually.
Okay. Yeah, I got it.
And I drove by there the other day, and it looked like it was cut back enough, but I was just kind of checking on the ordinance or whatnot.
All right, we'll check it out.
Can you go back to that first line of this one? It says R1, and the legend down there, that one?
That's kind of, what do you, that's more of a legend. I mean, it's really, how do I say that?
I know he resumed it. I remember.
Yeah, we'll fix that. It's not, it's not R1. It's really just a legend to kind of say that's what the zoning is, but that's, it's not right on that one. I got you.
Okay. Any other questions for David? Amanda?
I don't know if you can answer this, but it was going back to that Savers. It's like a goodwill. Does that mean it's like a nonprofit? I just wondered how much like sales taxes or any that we receive from it.
Vicky, do you know?
I don't. I can look into that, but I don't think they pay sales taxes.
They do not.
Well, you were shaking your head yes, so I didn't know if that was, yes, she's correct, or yes, they do.
Yes, Vicky is correct. They do not collect sales tax.
I just saw you kid doing this. I'm like, okay, does that mean yes or? Okay, any other questions for David? Thank you, sir. Any other items? One call, the October 9, 2025 O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call, Katie.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wechsler.
He's excused.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Caschella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
Everyone, please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Jeff Kewen, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Cook.
Both bow our heads, please. Here, go. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to live and thrive in this community. Be with each of us tonight as we engage in the business of the city. Help us to make the best decisions for our community and to do so in a friendly and productive way. And though we may disagree on the best course of action from time to time, let us do so as brothers and sisters in this community with respect for one another. Continue to watch over this community in which we are free to live, work, play, and pray in freedom and security. Amen.
Amen.
Please do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. One thing on the presiding office report, we have a proclamation. Mr. Boyer.
Sister Carol's not able to make it tonight, so I get to read this proclamation for Ageism Awareness Day. Whereas ageism refers to stereotypes, how we think, prejudice, how we feel, and discrimination, how we act towards others based on age. And whereas there are an estimated 20,000 older adults in O'Fallon, Missouri, over the age of 60, who are impacted by ageism. And whereas ageism towards older adults affect their health and longevity, financial well-being, and the economy of O'Fallon, of Missouri. And whereas preventing ageism in education, employment, housing, and healthcare will benefit all. And whereas recognizing that it is up to us to ensure that older adults are respected and portrayed as capable, competent, effective, and valued in all areas of society. And whereas ageism awareness and prevention, preventing ageism is beneficial to all citizens of O'Fallon, Missouri, by improving quality of life within O'Fallon, Missouri. And now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri, do hereby proclaim October 9, 2025 as Ageism Awareness Day.
Thank you, sir, and we will get that proclamation over to Sister Carol. Brings us to citizens' comments. I have one speaker, Mr. Dinoff.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Arne C. AC Dinoff, city public advocate, running for city council in April. Resolution A on the agenda is yet another $375,000 of Burns &amp; McDonald's instead of doing in-house, which we pay millions of dollars to staff and engineers. Resolution B is another $135,000 of elevator improvements. We just spent some elevator improvements. Resolution C is $118,000, I'm sorry, $119,000, George Butler and Associates, instead of doing it in-house. Resolution E is $31,250 in gas masks. Police Department and Police Chief Muminy, are we expecting a riot in O'Fallon? Resolution G, $29 million in bonds at 4% to 6%. Why don't we pay as we go, like the city of Wentzville with their public safety building that they're gonna be building, their public works building and their community center? Did they pay from savings rather than float a 30-some-million-dollar bond on the backs of taxpayers? And now I'm asking the city council reject and defeat soundly any extensions to the McGowan family, Rosalita's Cantina Mexico Road Real Estate LLC, conveniently formed on January 20, 2023, or the bogus corporate welfare for 421 Mexico Road Community Improvement District for one piece of property. They own a mint and other commercial properties and entities, one being in fancy DePere, Missouri, where the city attorney resides at the country club. They did these other projects without corporate handouts, city welfare programs, and making millions, millionaires more wealthier on our dime. This is highway robbery and places all the residents against the wall and unknowingly does not disclose, advise, or inform citizens that they're being charged 1% additional sales tax in addition to the current 7.8% sales tax rate, which would now be 8.8%. We are paying for part of doing business infrastructure and capital improvements, We are paying for part of doing business infrastructure and capital improvements, which would be engineering, concrete, landscape, striping, lighting, signage, utilities, basic components of running a business. We're paying part of their doing business infrastructure and capital improvements that the owners will see increased assets and profits while residents pay for these upgrades and enhancements to private property on the backs of our shoulders. This ordinance is insane and bad for residents. This bill is for sole profit and taking advantage of citizens and our city for one property owner, 421 Mexico Road Community Improvement District, the personal wealth and property owned by Sean McGowan, Seamus McGowan, and Bill McGowan.
You have 10 seconds.
In essence, we are paying for their home and structure. Very unfair, immoral, unethical. We're giving welfare to the McGowans $3.4 million over the next 20 years to build their future and their fortunes on the backs of our taxes.
Mr. Dinoff, your time is up, sir. Thank you. That's all the citizens' comments that we have. Brings us to ward reports. Ward four, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we're going to be hearing public comment in the first reading on a proposed, on a proposal to rezone our residential area to accommodate for new rental development. So before I do what we do, I just wanted to use this time to share where I stand on this because I believe that it reflects what so many of our residents have been saying for quite some time now. O'Fallon does not need more rental developments. In fact, I believe we're facing the opposite problem, a growing rentals concern that we'll have to address in the near future. It's not just about apartments or townhomes anymore either. We're seeing investment companies coming in, buying up single-family homes and established neighborhoods and turning them into rentals. It changes the character of our community. The people here do not want that, and I'm sitting in this seat as proof of it. Residents have made their voices clear time and time again. They want stability, strong neighborhoods, and opportunities for families to plant roots here, not more temporary housing. We have to ask ourselves, do we want O'Fallon to become a place for short-term living? Or do we want it to remain a place where families can build futures? Right now, we're seeing mostly rental developments or high-end homes priced at like half a million to a million dollar homes and/or, you know, other end, just apartments and things. There's very little in between. I love this city. I want to stay here. I want my kids to have the same opportunity to stay here. My son still lives with me. He go, why he goes to community college, but when he's ready to start his own life, to find a home, to build a family, to plant his roots here, I don't see that O'Fallon as a viable option for him or other young adults his age. It's time that we truly, truly start listening to our residents, the people we were elected to represent, and focus on creating affordable, family-owned homes that strengthen our neighborhoods and preserve the community that we're all proud to call home. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was going to do this as second in my road report, but just so I can dovetail onto my partner's note, I understand that rental properties are necessary. They're, they're a necessary part of a community. But frankly, we have a lot of rental property here in the city. And frankly, this spot makes so little sense, I, I can't describe it, of why this would be apartments as opposed to continuing the residences that are to the west or the commercial that's to the east. I, I honestly think this is a terrible spot for, for rental properties. So I'm absolutely opposed to, to, to rezoning this and making it apartments from the current zoning of R1. You want to talk about rezoning at C2? We can have a conversation. But R3? Yeah, I, I don't see that as being beneficial to the city. This is in the heart of, of the downtown area. We don't need apartments right next to R1 and C2. We need R1 or C2. My second point that I'd like to make tonight is just want to point out Patriots Landing has a homeowners association at the police station on October 22nd. That's 13 days today, so it'll be the day before the next council meeting. So be there or be square. That happens to be my subdivision, so if any of my neighbors are listening, I'll see you then. And finally, I want to make a point to our public commenter yet again about engineers. We don't have millions of dollars of staff and engineers. We have two engineers, two on staff, and they both have full-time positions here that preclude them from stopping what they're doing to do a design that's going to take a dozen and a half people, including drafters, engineers, designers, et cetera. So while I understand what he's saying, that we'd like to do everything that we can in-house, this is not something that we can do in-house, certainly not in any kind of capacity that would be timely or, or not too costly. So, and I'm pretty sure the two of them don't make millions of dollars. It's nothing against them, but they both seem like fine folks, but pretty sure neither one of them makes a million dollars. That's all the comments I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Word five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I really enjoyed Friday evening. It was our volunteer appreciation banquet. And major congratulations to David Schmols, who is the O'Fallon Ambassador of the Year. So it was a great event. Very proud to have been there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's fall time, so it's time to start cleaning out our garages so we can get our cars in for the winter. So we have a couple of events coming up. We have a recycling event on Saturday, this Saturday, at CarShield Field from 8 to 12. And then the following weekend is the bulk waste drop-off at the transfer station, and that's from 7 to 3. So get those garages cleaned out so you can get your cars in so when the snow comes and you're not parking on the street and you won't get a ticket. Thank you.
Mr. Roth, word one.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on Councilman Kewen and Ms. Taylor here. I'm not big on the apartments in the middle of our city. I can't really say anything that hasn't been said already, but I'm not for the rezoning or for building any apartments in downtown area. So I think most people's going to know how the council's going to go on that. And then I just want to mention that next Saturday on the 18th, the VFW has a car show going on. A lot of the proceeds will go to suicide prevention. And so if you don't got nothing going on next Saturday, stop by up at the post, VFW Post 5077 across from Ethels, and have a good time. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Word two.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Boyer?
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
Word three, Mr. Cascala.
Nothing for me tonight, sir.
Brings city administrators' report, Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries this month. Utility worker two, Matthew Rhodes, plant maintenance crew leader Phil Irwin, stormwater maintenance crew leader Mark Nellison, and police officer Ben Setliff have been with O'Fallon for five years. Police officer Mike Pearson, Sergeant Charlie Pleasant, Police Sergeant Chris Wright, and Police Sergeant Montana Stevenson have all served our citizens for the last 20 years. Speaking of Mike Pearson, he's retiring from service with the O'Fallon Police Department at the end of this month, and we wish him well as he moves forward with his next adventure. And last but certainly not least, police officer Charlie Neal and volunteer services manager Kathy Halsted have both served our city for the last 25 years. I want to thank all 10 of these individuals for being such an integral part of Team O'Fallon for all these years. And recently, I was advised by the East-West Gateway Council of Governments that they will be honoring our own Lenore Tozer Aldez with the 2025 Gateway Lifetime Public Service Award. This award honors exemplary individuals who've given a lifetime of service to the public sector and achieved the highest standard and benefit for the community for more than 30 years. That certainly applies to Lenore, as she's been in public administration for 40 years, including the last 15, as a bright and shining star for the great city of O'Fallon. We know how lucky we are to have Lenore, and this award helps us to show others how much she's appreciated. So congratulations to Lenore for achieving this recognition. And that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Congratulations, Lenore. Brings us to all business. Brings us to Bill 7789. Motion for second reading?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7789, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of O'Fallon and city of Darden Prairie, providing for maintenance of the Fizey Road path.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7789 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7249.
7249. Thank you, Katie. Brings to Bill 7790. Motion for second reading?
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Bill number 7790, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Corporate Cooperation Agreement among the city of O'Fallon, the 1421 Mexico Road Community Improvement District, and Rosalita's Cantina Mexico Road Real Estate LLC, to extend the deadline for substantial completion of the development project as defined therein to July 31, 2026.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second?
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Ms. Taylor?
I just wanted to say, you know, I'm not the biggest fan of these CIDs and all that, but the amount of calls that and messages I've received, people wanting this Rosalita's, asking me to get this out, and I hear them myself. So I'm just going to say that I am for it because of that. I've gotten a lot of people reaching out that want this up, so I'm excited.
Yep. Anybody else? Say none. Cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7790 passed and comes ordinance number?
7250.
7250. Thank you, Katie. Question, comments on committee and commission reports? Stand as read. Questions, comments on a consent calendar?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Kewen.
Cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. The consent calendar's been approved. Brings to new business. Item one, public caring to consider proving the rezoning of a certain tract of land located at 507 Sandrin Street, owned by Michael Schneider from R1 Single Family Residential District, Downtown Overlay District to R3 Medium Density Residential District, Downtown Overlay.
Good evening.
Address, please.
Jeff Simmons, Bax Engineering, 221 Point West Boulevard, St. Charles. As you're aware, we are here for the rezoning of the Stevenson Place subdivision proposed. This is located at 507 Sandrin and is located between existing residential to the west and north and commercial to the east and south. So we're in a transition area from residential to commercial, and we are looking to put apartments, 16-unit apartments. We first approached the city with a proposal for for-sale townhomes. However, because of access issues, access is along the east-west driveway next to, there's an electric company there, to the south side of our proposed parcel. That is not public right-of-way, and we need public right-of-way to be able to divide these into for-sale townhomes. Thus, we settled on the apartment proposal. It makes a good transition from that residential to the commercial. It does provide, you know, an affordable place for people to live that can't necessarily afford those half-million-dollar houses. See if I can. There we go. So this is what we're proposing. We are proposing access from Sandrin along the, the business, along the south side of the business with a driveway, a sidewalk, to the two eight-unit town, or apartment buildings. To the north is detention area. Couple of the items that planning and zoning requested that we add to this was a site-proof fence along the parking lot against the detention basin, as well as additional landscaping to the west, both of which we agree to. The other items during planning and zoning that were of concern were the fill that was placed. Geotechnical engineer will be employed to evaluate that, and there will also be a, an environmental investigation on the site and the fill that was placed. These are the same units that are, have been successful on Highway P called Shane Estates. The same developer has several units there. And this is a photo of what they would look like. And I do have a representative of the developer here. If you want to add anything at this point or address any comments when they come up.
Brian Kaufman, Elizabeth Madison Real Estate, P.O., Box 1671, O'Fallon, Missouri. Kind of like what Jeff said, when we first came to the city, we, we wanted to do these as for-sale townhomes, but due to that right-of-way, that private access, we were told that we could not do that. And if anybody knows, Mike can build affordable homes because he gets out there at 70 years old and still runs circles around these guys. So when you say sweat equity, he can do it and he can build them cheaper. So if this council has a way to make that happen, we can build affordable homes. Mike doesn't want to deal with rentals. We would prefer to make these single-family attached townhomes that, you know, young, young families or, you know, anybody really could get in there at, at an affordable price. That's really all I have to offer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions or comments from the council? Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you. Just curious about the roadway. Why was it, why is it an issue for apartments? Or I'm sorry, why was it an issue for single-family, but it's not an issue for apartments?
So because they're apartments, they, it would be considered a private drive. And so you don't need the right-of-way set aside. It can be on an easement. It's an access easement. So then there are also, as soon as you create right-of-way there, it creates setbacks. So those setbacks, jump back here, would impact the existing buildings.
Did that answer your question? Lisa?
Thank you. So what is on the property now and how is it accessed?
So it is accessed through that drive, and there is currently a, a single house on the property, and it has been filled over time.
Filled with people?
No. Sorry, fill, soil. Dirt's been imported to, to help level out the site.
Okay. The site has been filled?
Correct.
So nobody's living in that? I mean, it's an abandoned building?
Brian? Brian?
Brian, come on up here. Sorry. It's empty in here. It's not abandoned. Mike does have utilities onto it. It's, I think it was built in like 1930, 1940, something like that. So until, he had no intention when he bought this of actually developing it. Him and his brother bought it just so they could park their boats and trailers and stuff like that on it. And now they decided, well, you know, it might be their last hurrah together as brothers, and they'll probably die building this. No, I mean, they probably will. If you guys know the Schneiders, I mean, they, they probably will. And yeah, so that, that's kind of, you know, where they're at on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Amanda?
I keep saying it's being filled. What is the reason you keep bringing that up? Is it, if it wasn't filled, you couldn't build on it or?
Well, it, it will need to be filled to bring that up to grade and create a pad, pads for whatever development.
Well, I just, that just struck out to me because I know I was reading like the P&amp;Z, I think, reports or everything, and it said that it was being filled over time with no permits that were done by the given.
Apparently so. And Brian can probably speak better to this, but he has met with city staff and they're resolving that.
So this owner is a developer, right? I mean, he knows that
Retired.
Or retired, that he would need permits, though, and things like that. It just concerns me that, you know, not
He bought it, oh, sorry. They, they bought it, again, for just personal use. So he did not think that he needed to get any sort of permit since he was going to use it as residential and just, you know, for storage on his little trailers and Bobcat and stuff like that. But yes, he does know that if, to develop it, that yes, absolutely, 100%. And we're working with the city and engineering and, what, SCI? Yeah, on getting that remedied.
And just to let you know, at P&amp;Z, there's no building permits going to be allowed until they have the
Correct.
Geotechnical stuff done and up to code. So, that is part of the, one of the conditions if this passes. Anybody else? Gentlemen, if you would step aside. Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of council. RNC AC Dinoff, city public advocate. I'm highly opposed to this ordinance, proposed ordinance. First of all, I'd like to make on the record, there's conflicts of interest between certain elected officials and the former state rep, who I'm not sure if she's married or was married, to the applicant. The applicant has also been in the past, the city contractor, having contracts to build various facilities and various projects in the city. They are experienced, as they have done other complexes, one meaning on Missouri Highway P. The rezoning from R-one to R-three, I have some density issues. There's a lot of red flags that have gone up with this property. Number one, they snuck in ten-foot of fill was brought to this site without a State Department of Natural Resources or a city permit. There are safety issues and stability of the ground currently. Their building standards are iffy, and if the, um, if the, if, if you can put a building on the fill, it was brought to the site, there's accounts of questionable, illegal hazardous fill from neighbors within that neighborhood. And so, I think the Missouri Department of Natural Resources and the Environmental Protection Agency needs to make a visit to O'Fallon and look at this site to see if it complies with all promulgated rules and regulations. There's issues about retention discharge on the north part of the property. What is the actual density on eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty square feet versus the twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight square feet of service paved area, and not the entire density of the site as calculated? Our ordinance says it shouldn't be the exact acreage. It should be the site that's being constructed upon, which density is being calculated, and I think they're over our ten per one-acre ordinance. A sidewalk is a must on this property. They're trying to cram everything in there in profits. And as a matter of fact, they want to try to skate the tree planning preservation ordinance. And there's questions about the rentals going Section Eight through HUD, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, that brings crime, drugs, and other associated issues. For those reasons, because they were sneaky, a lot of red flags have gone up. They are not being above-board and compliant and transparent. I am definitely against this proposed ordinance at five-oh-seven Sondren Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Jeff O'Brien?
I'm not sure where some of the, the information came from. As stated, we will address any concerns regarding hazardous material and the fill that has been placed.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Linda?
Mine's not so much a question, but I did want to address the comment that was made. I do have, I am employed by the owner's ex-wife, and I have asked the city attorney and the mayor if I am in a situation where I do need to recuse myself from this particular vote, and because they are no longer married, I do not have a personal relationship with the developer. I have been told that I do not need to recuse myself from this vote, but since no vote is happening tonight, if our residents see otherwise, I would be more than happy to recuse myself.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Amanda?
I have a question. I'm not sure who can answer it or could be answered, but do we as a city have like a list of apartments and percent vacancies apartments? I mean, that's one of my big concerns, is I don't think we need rentals here. So, I don't know if we can be provided with that. I know apartments are going up. I know in my ward and ward, well, Ward Five, they have some going up on Veterans. They're gonna have that huge one down on Bryan and Fizey and Darty and Prairie that's gonna be open. That's gonna have so many units. So, that's one of my concerns that I would like to kind of investigate is, yeah, apartments that are in O'Fallon now, or rentals that are in O'Fallon now that are percent vacant. I don't know if we have that information.
Just remember, the one at Bryan and Fizey is not the City of O'Fallon. That's Darty and Prairie.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying.
I'm just letting you know, that's, that's not the City of O'Fallon. You guys have any numbers on? If I'm, David, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was probably the apartments were eighty, eighty-five percent full, last time we've heard.
I'm not even sure how we, did we find that out before?
I think the, one of the last apartments came in and basically said, that's what those rentals were. They were eighty to eighty-five percent.
Yeah.
Full.
Yeah, I just, we can maybe ask on a couple in particular, but over the whole city, I'm not sure how we would ever know that. But I can, is there a specific apartment complex? I guess there's a way we could check this individual ones, but overall, I don't know that we, I don't know how we'd figure that out.
I mean, if you can even give a list, I'll call them.
Yeah, we'll figure something out, I guess. Over the whole city, though? Yeah.
Now, 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 let me ask you, are you looking at apartments that are, just apartments? Are you looking, because you have the senior housing that are apartments, are you looking at those too?
No, I definitely.
Because we, a lot of the apartments in O'Fallon are senior apartments. So, I'm just, you know, we have some down south into town, and you got the one going up on Veterans Memorial.
No, I was talking about just apartments, apartments. Senior housing would definitely need, definitely. I mean, there's waiting lists, I know for that, but I'm looking at like how many apartments we have. I know the amount that's going up in our area, but also surrounding. So, my, one of my concerns is, yeah, that we're putting these up, and is there gonna be that big of a need? How much vacancies do we have even now?
Alexis, doesn't economic development have on their maps where the apartments are at?
Yes, we do.
Could you get that to the council, please?
If I may, I, I don't think the city develops its own data concerning occupancy rates.
No, we know.
Okay. And likewise, I don't know that we have it concerning the market price charged by various landlords for various units, which of course can determine their vacancy and with whom they compete. I don't know that we have necessarily information about what size apartments, how many two-bedrooms there are versus one-bedroom versus efficiency apartments. I don't know that we have data which allows an apples-to-apples assessment as to whether or not the market is such that it would be overbuilt and would be problematic from a public policy perspective. Remember, it's not the council's role, it's not the city's role, to decide who can compete in the marketplace with various products. That's, that's a decision made by the market itself. And so, you know, we, we wouldn't want to give the public the impression that the council's decision will be based on preferring to benefit the incumbent property, apartment owners, as opposed to competitors that may come into the marketplace. Just an observation. Thank you.
Brian, the ones on Highway P, is he full?
Yes, sir.
And the ones that he built over here?
The ones behind Oteopape are, he owns those, too.
Well, that, and he owns these back here, too, doesn't he, or not?
Back where?
On the other side of the tracks?
Oh, no, no, no. That was, I think that was Bird Kemper.
He built, he built that duplex over there, but that was.
Okay, just the duplex. That's what I thought. I knew you did something over there.
Those were for sale, the duplex.
Right. Okay.
So.
Anybody else?
Shane Estates is currently one-hundred percent leased, from what I understand.
Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen. Katie, I did close the public hearing, right? Okay. Brings the bill seventy-seven ninety-one, motion for first reading.
Roth.
Mr. Councilman Roth, do I have a second?
Kewen.
Senator Councilman Kewen. Councilman Roth, please present the bill.
Bill number seven-seven-nine-one. An ordinance providing for the, for the rezoning of a certain tract of land located at five-oh-seven Sondren Street, owned by Michael Schneider, from resident R-one to single-family resident, residential district downtown overlay to an R-three medium-density residential district downtown overlay.
Thanks, sir. Next is public comment, comment to consider granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Lee's Famous Recipe Chicken to allow a restaurant with a drive-through in a C-three highway commercial district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at nine-eight-eight Bryan Road within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Someone here to present this? If you would give us name and address for the record, and let us know what you want to do.
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Hunter. I'm with Net Leeds Properties. We are the development consultants for Lee's Famous Recipe Chicken. We are at one-zero-zero Forest Park Boulevard, Fort Worth, Texas. We are more than excited to be hopefully entering the City of O'Fallon. We've been working with city staff since March, when we began our preliminary investigation. It is our development philosophy to, to work with the city and to hit any ordinances that we can to, to meet the code. What we are proposing to build here is a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot restaurant with a drive-through, which is why we are in front of you today. As we look contextually within the, the neighborhood, there's a, a Dutch Brothers next door to us. There are drive-through restaurants up and down that road. We're excited to, to be a part of that tapestry. I will also mention that we are, we as in Lee's Famous Recipe Chicken, where this will be the first prototype building architecturally. So, they have rebranded. We are excited that this will be the first one that we will be rolling out across the country. So, I'm very happy to be answering any questions that you have this evening, and I'll, I'll leave my comments there.
Not as sad as I am, because you're the first one in Missouri, the first one in the state. So, O'Fallon always likes to be first.
Sure.
Questions? Mr. Cascala?
What is your proposed construction schedule? When is, when do you think this will be completed?
We anticipate a spring start once the thaw's complete. It's probably a four-to-five-month build, depending on weather. So, that gets us open late summer of next year, so twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. Anybody else? Mark, if you would step aside, this is public comment. Mr. Dinoff?
Thank you. Couple issue. Thank you very much, members of the city council. My name is RNC AC Dinoff, city public advocate. I love Lee's Chicken. I have to drive to St. Peters on Mid Rivers Mall Drive at Mexico Road to get their food, and I think they put on good quality, good food at a decent price. Although their current lease chicken in St. Peters is not in a special taxing district, there's no additional sales tax within that zone. I did some checking, and I called the state auditor and the department, Missouri Department of Revenue, and at the Planning and Zoning Commission in my testimony, I wasn't taking a stance. But I have to be against this Lee's Chicken, because it falls within a community development district, and they charge additional sales tax collections. And I think it's unfair to our residents for a piece of property that's never been built on. I think it's giving our other business districts an uneven keel playing field. And I will be boycotting this resident, this restaurant, and this district, and I think our citizens need to know, and I would ask the city council to place a condition in the ordinance, making it mandatory that a sign large enough and readable to clearly notify patrons who are entering the special taxing district that additional sales taxes are being collected. I would be for this project. The Lee's Chicken is a corporation who their stockholders make a lot in terms of dividends and rewards. They're not hurting for money. They're not hurting for corporate welfare and corporate handouts. And therefore, I can't support this application, because it falls within a community improvement district. For those reasons, I would ask that you deny this application. It's an unfair taxing district. It's unfair to put it on the shoulders of citizens to pay for infrastructure and capital improvement projects, because it's building their home by they reap the benefits, and they reap the assets when they go to either sell that building or do something else with that building. Nobody for our homes in O'Fallon built our foundation, built our sidewalks, built our deck, built our water tap and our sewer taps and our infrastructure to build our home on. For those reasons, I'm opposed to this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Keefe?
I feel it necessary to observe to the council, lest anyone misunderstand, that the issuance of a conditional use permit is an administrative proceeding which the council is called upon to consider based upon the evidence and the record. And the comments you heard have nothing whatsoever to do with the criteria for issuance or denial of a conditional use permit under the standards of the ordinances of the City of O'Fallon.
Thank you, sir. Anybody? Go ahead and close the public comment. Any more remarks to Mark? Mr. Kewen?
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind, can you please tell the audience how much of that CID will be going towards Lee's Chicken?
I would love to tell you that, but we are a tenant here, so we are not the actual property owner.
I'll answer it for you. Nothing.
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brings the bill seventy-seven ninety-two, motion for first reading.
Ragsdale.
Mr. Councilwoman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Senator Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Lee's Famous Recipe Chicken to allow a restaurant with a drive-through in a C-three highway commercial district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at nine-eight-eight Bryan Road within the City of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Brings the bill seventy-seven ninety-three, motion for first reading.
Kewen.
Mr. Councilman Kewen, second. Senator Cascala. Councilman Kewen, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number seventy-seven ninety-three. An ordinance calling for an election of city council members for the City of O'Fallon, Missouri on the next general municipal election, Tuesday, April seventh, twenty-twenty-six.
Questions or comments on Resolution ten-nine, twenty-twenty-five B? Ms. Taylor?
You know, I had to say something about only two bidders on this. I'm still on that. I think we need at least three bidders, but on this one, though, I did see that the two bids came within under ten percent, which didn't raise a red flag. But I, I still think we should have at least three bidders on these things. But yeah, I looked into the companies, didn't have a problem with that. Didn't see any flags that jumped out. I'm vote yes on this, but I just had to say that.
Ms. Taylor, I would love to have three bids, too, but you can't force people to bid.
Have, when's the last time we updated like our, our lists? I know when they were talking about it, sending all.
The only problem is, how many elevator companies are out there? It's, it's, that's the problem. So, I would love to have as many bidders as we can, but we just can't force people to come out and give us a bid. So, Mr. Kewen?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a public bid. It's open to anyone who wants to bid it. Is that accurate? It's public money. Generally, that's how that works. You advertise, and, you know, if two companies respond or twelve companies respond, it's really not up to the city. It's literally open for anyone who feels that they are, are able to do that work. So, I would love to have three bidders, five bidders, six bidders. I mean, the more bidders means more competitive price, but unfortunately, as the mayor pointed out, we, we can't, we can't control how many people are willing to accept the bid.
Yep. Anybody else? Go ahead, Amanda.
Well, other cities do have that ordinance, right? They do have a, a set that they say at least three bidders on things. I mean, I've read it. So, I mean, I know you keep making that argument, but other cities do it.
Go ahead.
I didn't want to argue in public, but what other cities do, it's good for them. But I'm telling you, if we don't get three bids, the only option is to go out and rebid. And rebidding costs time and money, and the bids come in higher every single time. I've been doing this. I've been doing this since 1992. I actually know what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Thanks for the explanation.
Wow. All right. Motion, second to introduce.
Kewin.
Cascola.
Motion by Councilman Kewin, second by Cascola, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 10-9, 2025B, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Advanced Elevator Company Incorporated, providing for improvements to the city hall service elevator in an amount not to exceed $135,092.
Motion second to approve.
Kewin.
Kewin, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes. As you all know, Resolution B has been approved. Questions, comments on Resolution C? Seeing none, most second to introduce.
Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 10-9, 2025C, a resolution authorizing an agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated, providing for preliminary design services for the North Lift Station upgrades project.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Cast your vote, folks.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution C has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution D? Most second to introduce.
Cascola.
Motion by Councilwoman Cascola, second by Councilman Kewin, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 10-9, 2025D, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Van de Venter Engineering Incorporated, providing for the purchase of 160 horsepower submersible. Fligged fifth.
Is that right? I'm not looking at what he's looking at, but is it the flight, flight pumps? Flag pump? What? Flight? Bull. Motion, second to approve.
Cascola.
Do I have a second? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution D has been approved. Questions, comments on Resolution E? Seeing none, most second to introduce.
Cascola.
Cascola, second by Councilwoman Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 10-9, 2025E, a resolution authorizing the expenses required for purchasing furniture and gas masks for the police department in an amount not to exceed $31,250.
Thank you. Motion second to approve.
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Cook.
Senator Councilwoman Cook. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution E's been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution F? Motion second to introduce.
Kewin.
Motion by Councilman Kewin, second.
Roth.
Senator Councilman Roth, all in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 10-9, 2025F, a resolution authorizing a change order in an amount not to exceed $100,000 to the agreement with Emire Contracting Incorporated, providing for the 2025 asphalt program.
Motion second to approve.
Kewin.
Senator Councilman Kewin, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilmembers, cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution F has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution G? Seeing none, most second, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted a little explanation on this. I was just trying to.
Vicki?
What this is, is this is the first step for us to start to issue bonds. We need to enter into an agreement with the financial advisor and with our bond council. So this is giving us the authority to do that. At the next meeting, we'll bring back a resolution that's going to give us the authority to go ahead and set a bond closing date and actually issue the bonds. Yeah, and you'll vote on that as well.
Anybody else? Most second to introduce.
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, was that Mr. Kewin?
Yes, sir.
Second by Mr. Kewin. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 10-9, 2025G, a resolution of the city council of the city of O'Fallon declaring its intent to proceed with the issuance of special obligation bonds.
Thank you. Most second to approve.
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Kewin.
Senator Councilman Kewin. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Resolution G has been approved. No further business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:22.